Can I see the video?
It's being livestreamed.
Is this, it is on. Come down here. First, welcome tonight. I would like to introduce Shelley Lewis. She is our Vice President of Cultural Services in the Shawnee Mission Area PTA. And she has been taking care of this for the last, oh, I think 10 years at least. So, this is, I'm Kim Benner. This is my first year of doing this, so bear with me a little. So, I'm proud to be here tonight honoring these wonderful artists. They've received the Award of Excellence from the Shawnee Mission Area Council PTA. The Reflections Program was born in 1969 by Mary Lou Anderson. Reflections is the largest and oldest art competition in the world with over 25,000 entries each year received. So, the competition is really tough. So, all of these Award of Excellence recipients went on to represent us at the state level. And we are anxiously awaiting the results that we will know in May. Art is so important, not only aesthetically, but because, let's face it, the world would be really boring without art. But it also helps with communicating and expressing yourself. I personally love art because I feel it's the one topic that you cannot ever be wrong in. So, each one of these artists that are here tonight, they had something special to say about this year's theme, "The World Would Be A Better Place If." We'd like to show you a short video showing their artwork. And afterwards, we will present our awards. Screen's on the side. If you guys want to watch the videos, look to the side there. Hopefully, there we go. There we go.
I think all is fair. I think it's far from. Distant people biting the dice. Only because you trust not to see what has become. Put down the whip and take my hand. I could show you a better plan. When I look up at the stars at night, I feel very small. How could a little girl like me even matter much at all? But even small things can change the world. Our ever-changing, beautiful world. Anyone?
I can bite my tongue. I can stay awake for days if that's what you want. Be known.
Technology has made us more selfish and separate than ever. Because while it claims to connect us, connection has gotten no better. And let me express first, Mr. Zuckerberg, not to be rude, but you should reclassify Facebook to what it is, an anti-social network.
The world would be a better place if we all did yoga.
Are you sure you're recording this time?
Yes, we are.
The world would be a nice place if everybody tried to help their neighbor or someone else.
Everybody was more willing to just take some time out of their lives to help people.
Making the video for me.
From Shawnee Mission North.
Yes, from Shawnee Mission North.
On her district computer.
Yes, it was on her district computer, so. And I have.
You want to start?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you guys ready for awards? Where do you want to do this?
We're just going to have you kind of come around in a circle.
This is Alexander Hillebrand. He did Home. And he has received the Award of Excellence. So, we can clap for Alexander. Yay! Award of Excellence Maggie Merkins, Walk in Peace. She's from Brookwood. Nina Kulakov. She did Watercolor of Brotherhood from Indian Woods. Michelle Chan from Shawnee Mission South. She did Big Girl Visual Art. Murphy Weiss, Doing Things You Like. Cassidy Randolph, Connected Literature. Leah Flint, What a Wonderful World from Brookwood. Beth Oliver, My Wish For The World from Shawnee Mission North. We have Sophia Boshart. Happy Heart Photography from Ray Marsh. Andrew Middleton, Photography, Beautiful Skies, Rising Star. Sophia Oliveira. Did I do it right? Oliveira. Diversity from Mill Creek. Ms. Haley Neff, We're All In This Together Photography from Shawnee Mission North. Ishya Pausvar. Paus, I'm so sorry. Now, you say your name.
Pausvar.
Congratulations. She did Snowflake Dance Music Composition from Briarwood. Grace Piper Fields Music Composition, Small Things. Ms. Emma Jo Matheson, Put It Down from Westridge Music Composition. Ms. Hannah Patterson, Contentment from Shawnee Mission North Music Competition, Composition, sorry. Is Jaden Butterfield here? Tatum Swanwick, Food Equals Energy Film Production from Rising Star. And Sophia Tarion, Better Together Film from Westridge Middle School.
Let's have a big round of applause. Root photos. Tall people in the front. Tall person right here. We'd be nice on an angle. And we slide over a little more. All right, and if everyone could tilt toward the center of the room just a bit, please.
This way.
There you go. Can I move you?
You guys want?
See you all right there?
You guys good? And let's turn your awards around. Want to hold your awards up too? There you guys go.
Ishya. All right, everybody looking through our window if you would, please. A big smile this way. I want to take a couple.
He always does. The stars. The best is when you got one upside down.
Great job, everybody.
Now, do I think it's the best?
Now, we're going to do it. Everyone is invited to come downstairs to the reception where we will have cookies and punch.
But first, we'd like to thank the board, the parents, and especially our very talented artists for sharing their art with us.
Say that one. This one right here.
Without further ado.
No.
The world is simply a better place because of each of these artists. I think we can all agree. I don't do well under pressure. Do you see that? I don't do well.
And thanks to the Shiny Mission Education Foundation and their excellent work that they provide for the students certainly in the school district. Construction update, you'll see a few pictures there that are before you. Since our community overwhelmingly supported our bond election in January, we've been busy planning many projects. So Dr. Southwick heads up this division of the school district and has asked him to provide some information to you this evening. Dr. Southwick?
Just a little bit of update and to know that Bob Robinson and I have worked extremely closely with all of the buildings that are ready for projects this summer and I think we have pretty good report. It's exciting time to be in the Shiny Mission School District. I want to talk a little bit about that tonight. First of all, we've got about $20 million worth of projects that will be out of the chute this summer in. And one of the most important projects that we've got that I want to talk about first are safe and secure entry projects. I'm gonna read down through the list of buildings that are set to benefit from those projects. Prairie, East Antioch, Overland Park, Santa Fe, Westwood, Tomahawk, Deemer, Corinth, Rushton, Broken Arrow, McCullough, Sunflower, East, South, North, Northwest, and West High Schools. There are a variety of projects going around the district. As you all remember, last summer, we embarked on some of those projects but weren't not able to complete those. And the support of our community through the bond issue has allowed us to finish that work this summer. Also have to give a handout to John Douglas who has been intricately involved in the design of this, these projects to make sure that we continue to make sure our students and staff and community are safe when we're in our buildings. With respect to that project work, we're working through the process right now. The majority of the projects are ready and we have permits and ready to go. A few of those, we're working some of the details out with a few of the municipalities. But as we sit right now, although they're very close, they're still pending, we will need to continue to work. East Antioch, Overland Park, Santa Fe, Tomahawk, Deemer, and Corinth. We're still trying to work through the process of city review for us to be able to move forward with the permits for those projects. So again, it's exciting, that's work that's gonna be fast and furious this summer. A lot of construction around the district with respect to safety and security, but we're committed to have that work ready for doors to open for staff and students in the fall. In addition to that, we've got about, and Bob you might correct me, how many million dollars worth of HVAC work do we have this summer?
Around eight million dollars.
Bob has done an assessment across the entire district looking at our HVAC. It's a lot of work and that's work that's never done, but I think you remember that in, back in 1994 when the district decided that we were going to have controlled environments in all of our buildings. And that was not only heating but also cooling. Those things have life cycle for about 20 years. Having gone through the math presentation, I know we can probably do the math on that and we're ready for a lot of repair work across the district with HVAC. So we've started that, that's work that's gonna happen over the next several years. Bob has identified those that are in the most, in the most need and those are the projects that we've started out with first. We've got normal construction projects along the way that we'll be involved in, just the typical kinds of things. Summer is the time when we have to, when the students are gone, the staff are gone, we really have to polish our buildings and Bob's crew will be working on that. I want to talk a little bit about some of the major projects that we have that are in different design phases. I think there's a motion tonight for the district to enter into a contract with Dunn Construction Company to do a construction management risk project to manage our upcoming projects for the bond issue. About a year ago, you all made a decision to consolidate some space for the Center for Academic Achievement. Well, we've been working on the design of that building. You hired them several months back and we have been working with them, with the architects through the approval process with the city of Overland Park and we hope to be able to move forward with that project rather quickly. We do have, I think, the permits, Bob, if I'm correct, to, and we've got bids that will be in place for us to demo the old building, but we're still, we'll look at final drawings and go through that review process with the city of Overland Park. Here's where it gets really exciting for me and interesting. We have, as you all know, as a part of the bond issue, we had five elementary schools that were identified for rebuilds. One of those for each feeder pattern. I'll mention West first because we have not identified a school or a location because of the active interest in terms of redevelopment in that area, but we'll be working with the cities and developers in those areas to try to identify where's the best place for us to put our next school. The district did move to the top of the list coming out of identification of needs. We have four elementary schools, Briarwood, Crestview, Trailwood, and Benninghoven. And each one of those, those feeder patterns have been moved to the top. And in the past, we would have built one of those at a time and taken, that would have happened over a period of maybe five to six years to complete that. Dr. Henson has given Mr. Robinson and myself a challenge as well as the architects and Dunn Construction Company that we will have four elementary schools out of the ground by Christmas. So we're working on that schedule, on that fast-paced schedule to make that happen. Again, we will go through the design process, we'll go through the permitting processes in each of those particular municipalities, and we'll be bringing those back to you at a later date, not only to review, but also to approve those bids so we can move forward. The, there's some logistics that go along with that. We have worked particularly in two buildings, Briarwood and Crestview, around not having an opportunity to rebuild those buildings on site while we have school. So we are going through the design process to level those buildings and build back buildings on those existing sites. We had to have places for those students to go. We met with the principals for each of those buildings and looked at two alternative sites, Broadmoor for Briarwood and Arrowhead for Crestview. We asked those principals to look at their staffing recommendations for next year, to look at the spaces and say, can you make this work? And I'm happy to say that our principals were excellent, they came back, they said we can make this work, we'll make it work if we get new buildings. So they're leading a lot of that process in their buildings with their staff and their communities. We'll have some release information that will come out in the very near future, but we will be moving those staffs starting the last day of school. We'll raise those buildings and those buildings will be under construction this summer. The staffs for both of those buildings have already toured the buildings, they're comfortable about the move and they're on board to make it happen with us. Trailwood, we believe, will be built on site, we'll be working with the intricacies of Overland Park, planning and permitting to make sure that we get everything that we need to be able to secure the permits. And then Benninghoven, we have some options. As you know, we are looking at a potential rebuild on that site but are also looking for some property that would be in the area. We have laid out a construction schedule, we've worked with our financiers to spend our bond money wisely. We want to deliver these facilities just as soon as we possibly can to our students, staff, and community. Having said that, we have a big challenge as we move forward, not only design and construction but making sure that we work with our city entities in the permitting process and in the overall review of the building. I will tell you that those buildings span across Shawnee, Merriam, Overland Park, and Lenexa. And as we move forward, we've tried to stress along the way the importance of community partnership. We think as we redevelop these schools and neighborhoods that that redevelops the community and that since we all serve the same people, it behooves us to be great community partners. That's been our message as we've met with mayor and city councilman and economic development people and as we move along, there are varying degrees of belief that that's what we really intend to do, but by and large, we think we make steps every day to ensure that we can build these buildings. The last piece that I would tell you is we're on slate to replace some of our turf fields this summer. We're gonna replace North. At North, we're also going to take the practice field and turn it into a field that'll be a multipurpose field. We're going to replace a field at East and we have one of the soccer fields at Westridge that we're going to replace and potentially two. We have for an alternate if the pricing comes out for us to actually do all of those fields this summer. So it's gonna be busy. It's an exciting time, I love doing this work. And Bob does a great job with his people and his staff. We have projects aligned, we have timeframes and if the board takes action tonight to hire J.E. Dunn, which we're hoping that he will, take our recommendation, we're going to ask that they come to the meeting next month to lay out a projection of the projects and talk a little bit about that. So if you have any questions, glad to try to address them. I'll tell you more than what you wanted to know.
Mrs. Mack, did you have a question?
Yes, please. Would you mind giving us an update on Chihuahua, because I'm thinking that's...
Yeah.
Is that what we're looking at here?
It is. I'm sorry I missed that because I'm focused on trying to get...
Secure entry projects. I'm going to read down through the list of buildings that are set to benefit from those projects. Prairie, East Antioch, Overland Park, Santa Fe, Westwood, Tomahawk, Deemer, Corinth, Ruston, Broken Arrow, McCullough, Sunflower, East, South, North, Northwest, and West High Schools. There are a variety of projects going around the district. As you all remember, last summer, we embarked on some of those projects but were not able to complete those. And the support of our community through the bond issue has allowed us to finish that work this summer. Also have to give a handout to John Douglas, who has been intricately involved in the design of this, these projects to make sure that we continue to make sure our students and staff and community are safe when we're in our buildings. With respect to that project work, we're working through the process right now. The majority of the projects are ready, and we have permits and ready to go. A few of those, we're working some of the details out with a few of the municipalities. But as we sit right now, although they're very close, they're still pending, we will need to continue to work. East Antioch, Overland Park, Santa Fe, Tomahawk, Deemer, and Corinth. We're still trying to work through the process of city review for us to be able to move forward with the permits for those projects. So, again, it's exciting. That's work that's going to be fast and furious this summer. A lot of construction around the district with respect to safety and security, but we're committed to have that work ready for doors to open for staff and students in the fall. In addition to that, we've got about, and Bob, you might correct me, how many million dollars' worth of HVAC work do we have this summer?
Around eight million dollars.
Bob has done an assessment across the entire district, looking at our HVAC. It's a lot of work, and that's work that's never done. But I think you'll remember that in, back in 1994, when the district decided that we were going to have controlled environments in all of our buildings. And that was not only heating, but also cooling. Those things have life cycle for about 20 years. Having gone through the math presentation, I know we can probably do the math on that. And we're ready for a lot of repair work across the district with HVAC. So, we've started that. That's work that's going to happen over the next several years. Bob has identified those that are in the most, in the most need, and those are the projects that we've started out with first. We've got normal construction projects along the way that we'll be involved in, just the typical kinds of things. Summer is the time when we have to, when the students are gone, the staff are gone, we really have to polish our buildings, and Bob's crew will be working on that. I want to talk a little bit about some of the major projects that we have that are in different design phases. I think there's a motion tonight for the district to enter into a contract with Dunn Construction Company to do a construction management risk project to manage our upcoming projects for the bond issue. About a year ago, you all made a decision to consolidate some space for the Center for Academic Achievement. Well, we've been working on the design of that building. You hired them several months back, and we have been working with them, with the architects, through the approval process with the City of Overland Park, and we hope to be able to move forward with that project rather quickly. We do have, I think, the permits, Bob, if I'm correct, to, and we've got bids that will be in place for us to demo the old building. But we're still, we'll look at final drawings and go through that review process with the City of Overland Park. Here's where it gets really exciting for me and interesting. We have, as you all know, as a part of the bond issue, we had five elementary schools that were identified for rebuilds. One of those for each feeder pattern. I'll mention West first, because we have not identified a school or a location because of the active interest in terms of redevelopment in that area. But we'll be working with the cities and developers in those areas to try to identify where's the best place for us to put our next school. The district did move to the top of the list coming out of identification of needs. We have four elementary schools, Briarwood, Crestview, Trailwood, and Benninghoven. And each one of those, and those feeder patterns have been moved to the top. And in the past, we would have built one of those at a time and taken, that would have happened over a period of maybe five to six years to complete that. Dr. Henson has given Mr. Robinson and myself a challenge, as well as the architects and Dunn Construction Company, that we will have four elementary schools out of the ground by Christmas. So, we're working on that schedule, on that fast-paced schedule, to make that happen. Again, we will go through the design process, we'll go through the permitting processes in each of those particular municipalities, and we'll be bringing those back to you at a later date, not only to review, but also to approve those bids so we can move forward. There's some logistics that go along with that. We have worked particularly in two buildings, Briarwood and Crestview, around not having an opportunity to rebuild those buildings on-site while we have school. So, we are going through the design process to level those buildings and build back buildings on those existing sites. We had to have places for those students to go. We met with the principals for each of those buildings and looked at two alternative sites, Broadmoor for Briarwood and Arrowhead for Crestview. We asked those principals to look at their staffing recommendations for next year, to look at the spaces and say, can you make this work? And I'm happy to say that our principals were excellent. They came back. They said, we can make this work. We'll make it work if we get new buildings. So, they're leading a lot of that process in their buildings with their staff and their communities. We'll have some release information that will come out in the very near future, but we will be moving those staffs starting the last day of school. We'll raise those buildings, and those buildings will be under construction this summer. The staffs for both of those buildings have already toured the buildings. They're comfortable about the move, and they're on board to make it happen with us. Trailwood, we believe, will be built on-site. We'll be working with the intricacies of Overland Park planning and permitting to make sure that we get everything that we need to be able to secure the permits. And then Benninghoven, we have some options. As you know, we are looking at a potential rebuild on that site, but are also looking for some property that would be in the area. We have laid out a construction schedule. We've worked with our financiers to spend our bond money wisely. We want to deliver these facilities just as soon as we possibly can to our students, staff, and community. Having said that, we have a big challenge as we move forward, not only design and construction, but making sure that we work with our city entities in the permitting process and in the overall review of the building. I will tell you that those buildings span across Shawnee, Merriam, Overland Park, and Lenexa. And as we move forward, we've tried to stress along the way the importance of community partnership. We think as we redevelop these schools and neighborhoods, that that redevelops the community and that since we all serve the same people, it behooves us to be great community partners. That's been our message, as we've met with mayor and city councilman and economic development people. And as we move along, there are varying degrees of belief that that's what we really intend to do, but by and large, we think we make steps every day to ensure that we can build these buildings. The last piece that I would tell you is we're on slate to replace some of our turf fields this summer. We're going to replace North. At North, we're also going to take the practice field and turn it into a field that'll be a multipurpose field. We're going to replace a field at East. And we have one of the soccer fields at West Ridge that we're going to replace, and potentially two we have for an alternate, if the pricing comes out, for us to actually do all of those fields this summer. So, it's going to be busy. It's an exciting time. I love doing this work. And Bob does a great job with his people and his staff. We have projects aligned, we have timeframes, and if the board takes action tonight to hire J.E. Dunn, which we're hoping that he will, take our recommendation, we're going to ask that they come to the meeting next month to lay out a projection of the projects and talk a little bit about that. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them. I'll tell you more than what you want to know.
Mrs. Mack, did you have a question?
Yes, please. Would you mind giving us an update on Chihuahua, because I'm thinking that's...
Yeah.
Is that what we're looking at here?
It is. I'm sorry I missed that, because I'm focused on trying to get permits for buildings for the summer.
You did great.
Chihuahua is a rebuild that's under construction right now on-site. Chihuahua, the students and staff continue to go to that building. That building's under construction, and we've had great winter for construction. We're probably a little bit ahead of where we need to be, but I believe that we are set for them to deliver that building to us for a potential spring move-in of next year if we decide to go ahead and move the staff in spring. Once we move the staff, they'll raise the rest of the building, finish the parking lots, playgrounds, and all those things, so that the following year, everything will be in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty.
As you know, the legislature is still in session, maybe still in session even this evening, and I've asked our lobbyist, Dr. Stuart Little, to try to make some sense of some things, if possible. Stuart, and give us an update on what's taking place in Topeka that would potentially impact us.
Make some sense of things, thank you. Hi. I wanted to thank Dr. Henson and the board for your continued support, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going on and kind of what we're looking at. This has frankly probably been the busiest legislative session that we've had on education issues, but once I start talking about things, it won't make sense maybe. But a lot of stuff going on, and I'll talk a bit about where we are. This is actually the last week of the regular legislative session. They will conclude on Friday, go home for most of the month, and come back on the 29th of April to begin the wrap-up veto session. And so, this is pretty timely. Things are happening even as we're meeting tonight. And so, I'll give you an update, best I can tell you where we are now on a lot of things, and then would be happy to answer any questions. If there's something I've missed, I'll get back with you all. We've gone through this legislative session, everything from the beginning, proposed cuts in LOB equalization, the governor's allotment to reduce base state aid per pupil funding, through the block grant process and the passage of that bill that the governor signed about a week and a half ago. Frankly, at this point, probably in any of you all's tenure on the board here, there have probably been never more unknowns than there are right now about what's coming in the future and what things are going to look like and how they will take shape. We have, as the, we get to the veto session, we don't have any resolution on the state's revenue package. We don't have any resolution on what the state budget will look like, other than K through 12, which was passed in Senate Bill 7. But of course, there's always potential for more changes that could take place at that point. We've got a number of policy bills that I'll talk about that are still hanging out there, and then, of course, kind of looming in the background overall, this is what role the courts may play in any resolution of anything that happens before the end of the legislative session or after the session's over. The block grant proposals that were passed, as you all are well aware, two days after the governor signed the bill, Senate Bill 7, the plaintiffs in the Gannon case filed an injunction at the district court level. There'll be a hearing on May 7th to address that issue. The legislature will be back in session by that point. So, depending on how swiftly that moves, one has to assume has been the case thus far, anything will be appealed to the Supreme Court, and so there likely won't be anything resolved before the legislature ends the regular session, or the veto session and goes home sometime in May or June. But that's going to be out there, and I think it's suggesting, depending on what happens, there may be a special legislative session, since the last one they had was, I think, in 2006. So, that's always a possibility, depending what happens and how the court acts on that. There has been no, since the block grant proposal was passed and the governor signed it, there've been kind of growing conversations about, okay, what comes next? What are we putting together? What will be the potential for a new formula? Nothing official has been done yet. I'm assuming, and most of us are, that there'll be a legislative group convened to spend time over the summer and the fall, talking about school finance formulas. There was a bill that was introduced, and there was a quick two-day hearing on that bill put forward by Senator Abrams, who's the chair of the Senate Education Committee. It is an interesting bill, changes a lot about what we focus on in terms of outcomes and the process. The hearing was interesting. There were, it's targets, it's six innovative school districts right now, and then over the next two years would transition into a new formula for everyone. I wouldn't, I'm not going to spend, there's a write-up that, and the report that I sent over that talks about that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this. I'm not sure that's going to, that's going to be the basis of what the new formula is. I think some of the things that were interesting in there was, rather than having the old waiting, talking about issues such as poverty, generalize what your census level poverty is rather than at-risk, attempting to address rural school districts by having something called a sparsity index, which would be the absence of students in certain districts. And then, one of the important factors in that proposal was having within a formula some measure of success. How are you determining student performance? And this wouldn't be the way we've been thinking about it since 1992 in terms of test scores and those kinds of things, but in terms of post-graduation achievement. I think everyone's already, has kind of figured out, those are hard things to determine, so, and what do you, you know, you're setting policy for six-year-olds based on 20-year-olds, and so, but I think that some of those components, sparsity, poverty, and success are going to be parts of whatever is the next school finance formula that comes up. I'll talk a bit about a couple of policy issues that we have going on right now, and as we got to the, if you think about everything that I've sent you over the last two months, almost three months here, in terms of proposed legislation, there's actually very little that has moved, very little that's alive, very little that's in play right now, and probably not a lot of stuff is going to get resolved this week. Normally, we get to the end of the regular legislative session, and we wrap up a whole lot of stuff, and then they just fix budget and revenue and a couple of bills at the end of the legislative session. The challenge that we've had this year is that everyone knows the veto session is going to be very long, because you've got to fix taxes, you've got to fix the budget, and so people are pushing things off. So, I don't have a lot of resolution on anything for you right now, for the most part, but these will be a lot of things that could get done this week. Likely, some of them will get done at the veto session. Many of them will disappear. And so, in my report, I put together a list of kind of items that are up for discussion, and so I'll just give you some brief highlights of kind of what's really alive right now, and then I'll hit some of the high points on what's dead. Moving elections. As of 5:30 this evening, the Conference Committee on Elections has been meeting and talking about what they will resolve. The House has made a proposal to the Senate. As you recall, we've got a Senate position, which is move spring elections to the fall, odd-numbered years, nonpartisan. That's the Senate position. The House position is move spring elections to the fall, even-numbered years, keep them nonpartisan, but put local elections at the top of the ballot. So, we'll stop complaining about being below the president, they'll stick us up at the top of the ballot. But they are both nonpartisan. So, we're in the process, the House at 5:30 tonight, proposed that they accept the Senate, the House position, so that we would be in even-numbered years. They'll come back at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we'll have more negotiations and everything, but those are in the works. And something, I feel very strongly, based on the tenor and the tone of the conversations with legislators and in the legislature, that spring elections will be moved to the fall, most likely an odd number. I don't think there's a will to put them, make them partisan, but I think that's where we're headed, frankly. So, and so that's all the, the discussion now is not whether to do it or not, it's how to do it. So, that's where we are. There's one other issue that came up late in the session just last week. Senate Bill 42 is a bill that requires lobbyists, if you're paid from public funds, to report that, put it on your reports. They added in an amendment in the Senate, which is also a part of the same conference committee that's talking about moving elections, a requirement that you all would be required, every local unit of government, cities, counties, school districts, would be required to post in your budget, all of your association's dues that you pay to any association, state, local, national, and then you would be required to report the names and contact information of every lobbyist that works for that. So, you would have to contact Washington for the National Association of School Boards, if there's such a thing, and report all of their lobbyists in your publication as well. This is part of a small group of people in the legislature who think that that information's hard to find, and it needs to be put somewhere, which is going to be a significant administrative burden for you all to do every year, but that's in conference committee right now. There is in conference committee as well, in the commerce side, having to do with Professional Negotiations Act. As you're aware, and I've reported in the past, we had a lot of conversation about changes to the PNA. There's a House position that is essentially the KASB, KNEA, USA compromise. You can do mandatory salaries and wages and hours, and then everybody gets to pick five topics, and that's the House position. The Senate position is mandatory salaries and wages, and each side gets to pick three issues that they add to that. The House bill, which was in the Senate, was killed last week, and so the only issue out there, bill out there now, is the one that has three items. So, it's likely that the Commerce Committee that meets, and they're meeting tomorrow afternoon, will take this up, and there'll be some resolution, still probably somewhere between five and three, since that's the two positions that exist there. In the Education Conference Committee, I honestly believe there is not a single bill that has passed both chambers and is in the Education Conference Committee, which is bad if we had a lot of things that we wanted, but it's good if there are a lot of things going on that we're not interested in. So, there are a variety of issues that are possible to come up in Education Conference Committee. There has not been one scheduled yet. It's, there probably won't until the veto session, but they actually don't even technically, I think, have anything they can conference on. So, what's left out there that's possible, and I just want you all to be aware of that? The changes in the laws regarding homeschool students' ability to participate in school activities. That bill passed the House, but the Senate tabled it, or that passed the Senate, but the House tabled the bill, but if it passes one chamber, it could be in conference committee. Expanding the reporting requirements, what you all have to put in your budget as a glance document. There are people that don't feel like there's enough information in there, and so you're going to have to expand what gets put into that. One issue that certainly will move, I suspect this year, has to do with changes to the use of seclusion and restraint for certain pupils. The House passed a bill with a tremendous margin that put extensive into statute what were current KSDE rules and regs. The Senate position is to create a task force with a bunch of disability group representation to talk about what should happen. So, we've got to change the statutes, or let's have a task force and work that out. And that'll get worked out in the, in the next, probably before this week is over. Couple of other things that came up that we've been tracking that still have a possibility, but probably unlikely. Expansion of the requirements on school safety programs, that was going to require you all to keep a daily log, literally, of everything that could be a crime. You'd have to be reporting accusations of crimes and those kinds of things. That's unlikely to happen. One of the, kind of the big issues from early in the session, the promotion of materials harmful to minors. That bill passed out of the Senate. It's sitting on the House floor, but it's one of those kinds of things that there may not be a lot of interest in pursuing that. The same thing with regard to the, that kind of same position is the opting out of sex education classes and making that change. Those are both still sitting there. Some of the things that are also likely possible, but probably not going to happen, in particular because they haven't made it very far through the process, the expansion of background checks on teachers. Senate Bill 70, that got hung up, and it has not passed both chambers. The Conference Committee that that's in, Corrections and Judicial Justice, is meeting tomorrow, and if it shows up on a list tomorrow, then it's going to be something to be talked about. But one other issue that's kind of making its way through are some proposed changes to capers, working after retirement exemption that we've had for three years to allow folks making over the salary threshold to continue to work after retirement. There was a bill that was introduced that would set a cap of $20,000, anybody working after retirement, for anyone would cease getting their capers benefits, and they'd contribute into the new Tier 3. They could continue to work, but they wouldn't be able to collect capers and do that as well. The Senate introduced a bill that does the same thing today. They're having a hearing on it tomorrow, so that suggests there's a lot of interest in doing something about working after retirement issues, but it's making its way very slowly. Everything's frankly moving pretty slowly. Otherwise, a couple of other things that I might mention in terms of some policy bills that are coming. Things such as the Common Core prohibition, those aren't moving anywhere. Penalties for violating, perceived violating of the Student Data Privacy Act, those aren't moving anywhere. That's, in a lot of ways, I hate to come in with so many unanswered questions, but this is the last week. There may be a lot of things resolved, but I at least wanted to give you a sense of kind of what's on the table at this point. Lots of those policy issues are probably going to die. I think part of the challenge will be, the longer we're here in May, there may be more, you know, idle hands, as they say. There may be time for lots of people to think up, whatever happened to that bill? Maybe we ought to talk about that a little more. So, some of those things will still be alive, but not a lot of things moving right now. I think the school tax policy and overall budget pictures are beginning to consume all of the energy and attention in Topeka, so. I would be happy to answer any questions, if you might have.
Any of you have questions for Dr. Little?
Just really briefly, did you mention the criminalization for teachers? Did you talk about that piece? I don't...
The, the, from the material harmful to minors, I believe it's Senate Bill 60. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Little, very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Really? We're going to talk about snow days tonight? I'm not sure who inserted this into the PowerPoint, but, and we really are. I'm trusting, I hope, that we're past the period of time where we might miss any school for inclement weather days. And so, we're getting ready to turn April. That can happen. We can have spring storms, so contingent upon any unwanted spring storms. The last day of school will be the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. As you know, we built four inclement weather days into the calendar. It doesn't look like, so notice there's a huge asterisk, it doesn't look like we're going to miss any days for inclement weather, therefore, the last day for students would be an early release on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. So, again, that's why you see the question marked there on the slide, and so if the weather cooperates, Friday before Memorial Day weekend will be our last day of school. I want to talk briefly tonight about fees and a couple of things that are going on in that regard. So, Dr. Little outlined tonight some of the uncertainty we have in relation to really budgeting for next year and the things that could change, which makes things very complex for us. As I have mentioned to you previously, contingent upon us moving forward with what we know right now, that we will reduce the class size at our elementary schools. Grade four, the current ceiling is 29, that will drop to 27. In grades five and six, the current ceiling is 30, and that will drop to 27. So, we reduced our administrative footprint. We have the funds for that to happen unless they're taken away by our legislators in Topeka, and so we're still on target for that to occur, the reduction in class size. Notice the concern about what may or may not happen from our legislators in Topeka. Also tonight, some, couple of things that I think are very exciting for us, so we have been very diligent in reallocation of our resources, very frugal in some areas. So, if we move forward with the same budgetary plan that exists now, so obviously, go ahead.
Well, the budgetary plan, I think, as, as I view it, is based on the block grants that are proposed but are sort of in limbo and may not come to fruition, but we're hopeful that they do. That's the premise that we're operating under, right?
That is correct. So, if the block grant bill stands, we will reduce our class size, 30 to 27 ceiling, and then 29 to 27 in grade four, and we will eliminate fees for kindergarten in the Shawnee Mission School District, and we will eliminate textbook fees at the elementary level. So, our elementary parents will not have any fees that are charged to them in the Shawnee Mission School District. That is contingent upon the block grant bill continuing down that path. Obviously, if the, if something else changes and that block grant bill doesn't go through, and then we would go back to the governor's plan, which had us picking up a portion of capers, and then we throw in Senate Bill 71, that's an entirely different story. So, literally, it could be talking, we're talking about reducing fees for, or eliminating fees for kindergarten, eliminating textbook fees for elementary, reducing class size. The other end of the pendulum is we could be talking about a reduction in force of employees. I mean, it is that significant. So, when we look at multiple millions of dollars that we could potentially lose between now and June 30, and then the following year, potentially the following year, in relation to where we are currently, it is a very, very significant issue. And so, that's where we are currently, and so I trust that we keep down this same path, that the block grant bill is funded in relation to that issue, and we can really make progress. So, Dr. Southwick?
And it could be my call, but I just want to clarify, the reduction in class size... And it could be my call, but I just want to clarify, the reduction in class sizes would span grades three through six.
That is correct. And so just through sixth grade, and so the 30 to 27 and the 29 to 27. Questions? Comments? We will bring the entire fee schedule to you at the April Board Meeting. Again, the only caveat is what will we know in April in relation to what might happen in May? And so I don't know how you want to describe it, but the uncertainty of the fiscal picture makes it very, very difficult for us to really plan and budget in that process. So questions on fees? Anyone? Okay, that's all I have for you. Mrs. Eila?
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Henson. We'll move on to open forum, and I will just read the blurb about open forum. At each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will usually not receive a response during the meeting. We have three speakers in open forum tonight, so I would ask you, in just the interest of time, to maybe limit your comments to five minutes. Hopefully, that's a generous amount of time for you all. Our first speaker tonight is Charles Hammer. You may come to the podium. Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Hammer. I have lived 50 years at 4829 Black Swan Circle in Shawnee. Our two daughters are graduates of your excellent schools. I came here tonight to report a crime wave. You members of the Shawnee Mission School Board, plus the teachers and children you serve, are its victims. The crime is easy tax giveaways to wealthy corporations in all its multiplying forms. It's theft, because though voted in by the Kansas Legislature, our schools never agreed to give their taxpayer funding to private corporations. In December, my hometown Shawnee City Council voted to give away $17 million, or 100% of the new property taxes over 20 years for the proposed Landing Shopping Center. Nearly half that loss would have come from the Shawnee Mission School budget. How strange it was that the developer himself regained his sanity and backed out of the deal for a site so steep it requires a retaining wall nearly five stories high. But it's not over yet. My city council still designates the site for tax increment financing. When any new developer builds for a tax-free 20 years, our school district will lose that much of its budget. And what a gift to the landowner, whose sale price now will be based not only on its real estate, but also on that guaranteed handout of taxpayer money to a future buyer. Over that future 20 years, Shawnee will collect 1% of sales tax on every dime spent at the site. Most Johnson County cities get 1% or more of total sales taxes on purchases within their boundaries, more than 10% of all the sales tax we pay. What a deal for cities. They can gloat, "We give away your school money, and it makes us rich." The giveaways also take money meant for the Johnson County Community College, the Library District, the Park District, and the county itself, all agencies that live on a mill levy. Concerning that sales tax, guess what Miriam rakes in when a plush Mercedes or BMW sells at one of the taxpayer-subsidized car dealers lined up along I-35? A $100,000 car means more than, than $1,000 in sales tax for Miriam. On one piratical deal, Miriam even used its sovereign power of eminent domain to evict a low-price dealer and force sale to a premium dealer. Tiny Miriam has only 11,000 residents, but eight of these tax-freebie projects. The giveaways total nearly $52 million, of which your district will pay nearly half. But our cities must compete for these corporations, don't they? For instance, the Bayer Animal Health Corporation demanded from Shawnee a 75% tax abatement on a $90 million project. Bayer whipsawed Shawnee by threatening to move to Lenexa if the city council refused. So Shawnee added up 75%, nearly half of it your school money. Thus, we residents who pay 100% of our taxes had to pay the difference. If Bayer had instead simply paid its taxes, your district would have benefited in either location. Bayer won other abatements in 1962, 2002, and 2005. It never ends with that company, which I nominate as Johnson County Corporate Welfare Queen. The only argument for tax giveaways is everybody's doing it. We might temporarily accept that if cities were backing a federal law to stop the giveaways. Such a law would return our nation to the era of free enterprise capitalism, when developers chose business sites for efficiency, not for bribes of taxpayer dollars. But such laws do not interest our legislature, legislature chambers of commerce and city councils. They kid us along by saying they will stop the giveaways when commercial assessments reach 30% or so of total valuation. How can that ever happen while residential building continues and they keep giving away the commercial tax base? No financial scam or crime of burglary can equal the stealth of these giveaways. Here at the school board, you come up with an annual budget, you set a tax rate, and citizens pay year after year. We know we are paying, but the one news story that tells us of a big tax giveaway, likely that will be all we ever hear about it. Probably the school loss will not even be mentioned. Year after year, taxpayer money quietly will be ladled out to the developer. Citizens will never again be reminded that cities are robbing the school districts to pay business tax bills. I ask you now to break through the curtain of stealth. Each year, order your financial managers to list all those who escaped the school tax, how much they avoid each year, and in total. Find out what these giveaways are costing you. Send your list to every media outlet, student newspaper, community college, and PTA. This very night, you could vote to seek those facts. Second, seek a Kansas law giving agencies forced to pay for tax giveaways a vote equal to their proportionate loss. Thus, your district would gain nearly 50% of the power to grant or deny them. Then demand a similar proportionate share of that 1% sales tax, which enriches cities and makes them so eager to give away your school budget. Even better, demand to know why money for wealthy developers should come from school budgets. Dr. Little might, for instance, suggest that, that they finance these giveaways with a new Kansas income tax, or even that city sales tax. Third, organize. Bring together all the losers from tax abatements. Those, those listed above, plus Blue Valley, Oletha, and DeSoto School Districts, reach out to Topeka and Wichita Public Schools. It seems Kansas is out to starve education in the state. This would be among the better ways to fight back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
I've got some copies that I would appreciate if you would take.
Very good. Give them to the clerk there, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our second speaker tonight is Kathy Cook.
Thank you. It's Kathy Cook, 5530 Nolan Road, Shawnee, Kansas. I'm here tonight as a patron of this district, as a Shawnee Mission graduate, and as a parent of a Shawnee Mission graduate, as well as the co-founder of Kansas Families for Education. This morning, I was proud to join Game On for Kansas Schools Group in Topeka as they finished their 60-mile march for public school funding. They were joined by public education supporters all over the state. We should be proud in Shawnee Mission that we have such dedicated patrons and six legislators representing our schools, who stand strong not only for our students, but for students across the state. It's unfortunate that this board and administration blessed the repeal of our school finance formula for block grants, which offer neither stability or certainty, as we heard from Dr. Little this evening. It's almost as if you all have said, "We're just resigned to a grossly underfunded system." It's not the Shawnee Mission way. I'm deeply concerned that a number of actions that you all have taken recently. Was it necessary to fire custodians in our district that have been here 20 years? I know that you might be able to hire replacements for less. However, those custodians are members of our communities, they raise their families here, they send their children to our schools, and they deserve better from Shawnee Mission School District. That so-called reorganization is not the Shawnee Mission way. I understand there's been a freeze on teachers' purchase orders for the remainder of the year, and I've also understand that there are reading specialist positions going unfilled in some of our title schools. These impact the children in our classrooms. Yet last week, this entire board and our superintendent chose to attend an out-of-state conference on our dime. Not one other school district in this state took their entire board to that conference. Why not? One, most of them could not afford it, and second, it doesn't require every single member to attend a conference and bring that information back to us. When was the last time we offered or promoted professional development conferences to our teachers? Those who actually have an impact on our children every single day in the classroom. I'm here today because this board chose to endorse those block grants. The legislators who supported the block grants, they said this is what the district wanted. So if you're not willing to hold those in Topeka responsible for the gross underfunding of our schools, then patrons must hold you responsible with how you spend the inadequate amount of funding that you have willingly agreed to accept. I wager that most of the patrons in our district believe that their tax dollars should be spent on students, teachers, and staff in our school buildings before board member conferences or the hiring of additional administrators. I respectfully ask you all to examine your actions and ask yourself, is this the Shawnee Mission way? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Our third speaker tonight is Chris Rozell.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Chairwoman, members of the board, staff, and other members of the district. My name is Chris Rozell. I come tonight concerned that when students graduate from Shawnee Mission, according to the best statistics I can find, only 50% of them are registered to vote. That seems unbelievable. That's why of 18- to 25-year-olds in Kansas, only 58% of them vote. A few more register to vote each year. But at graduation, the best statistics suggest that only 50% are registered to vote. I'm here to ask you to do two things. These are things you don't do. Record and report the percentage and the number of graduating seniors who are registered to vote. And the second thing is offer every student the opportunity and facilitate the opportunity to register to vote. In this conversation, I will tell you why I think you should do these things. The reasons are patriotism, you have the power, accountability, and good facilitation. First, patriotism. We want people to vote in this country. That's what the revolution was about. Furthermore, we should want your graduates to vote, because guess who they will vote for? What they will vote for? They know the schools, they know what the schools need, they will probably support your budgets. They will probably support your staff, your programs. But if they aren't registered to vote, you don't get that support. Furthermore, of course, we want cultural diversity. Well, if you leave out half the youngest people in Kansas, we aren't getting at least the representation of the young. Next, not being registered equals not voting, of course, and not voting means you aren't being represented, and not being represented means you're going to be alienated from the system. People who are alienated from the system occasionally, hasn't happened here yet to my knowledge, but occasionally burn down the cities, riot in the streets. You don't want that to happen. They need to get bought into the system, they need to get registered, and you have the opportunity to do it. Second, you have the power to do this. I called the Acting Director of Education for the State of Kansas. He said he thought the schools had, he understood the schools had, the school districts had the power. He thought it ought to be done, but that doesn't matter, because he doesn't make the laws. I called the governor's office. They don't know what they stand for, but they gave some different answers. I called the Secretary of State. Well, they're more interested in getting people, putting up obstacles to getting registered than making sure that people have the opportunity to get registered, but that's editorial. But they made no objections about the school districts counting how many of their students register to vote and facilitating the opportunity to get registered to vote. Third, just good accountability for your American history, for your civics, for your government, would be counting how many of your students and what percentage of your students, what percentage of your graduates get registered to vote, wouldn't it? You can't impact something if you don't measure it. You don't know what's happening if you don't observe it. And right now, the school district isn't observing it, isn't reporting it, and doesn't know what's happening. Last, I suggest you don't just give this information. This is important. This is what our founding fathers fought the revolution about. Yes, educate about it, but make it relevant to the students. When I talked with young people before the November election, I found none that was registered to vote, and I explained to them that without them registered to vote, we do collect their taxes, whether it's income taxes or not, it will at least be sales tax. We get that. They don't get, go into any store and spend money without our getting, us getting our sales tax. And taxation without representation was initially about sales tax, right? I explained to them, if they don't get registered to vote, and they don't register, and they don't vote, that the people making decisions about their future are people that look like me. You think they want me making them their decisions about their sex life, about their use of the internet, about their entertainment, about whether they get sent to war? I'm not going to go to war, but they will. When I explained that, they said, "Oh, how do I get registered to vote?" Well, it should have been done in school, I think. You had them here 180 days a year for 13 years, but we missed that opportunity somehow. So I'm suggesting, I'm asking you for these four reasons: patriotism, accountability, you have the power, and it's a good learning practice. I'm asking you, one, to measure and report the number and percentage of graduates who are registered to vote upon graduation, and, two, to make sure that everyone is offered the opportunity to vote before leaving your doors. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We will move on to the approval of the minutes for the special meeting on February 23rd. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Is there any discussion or corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Move on to the regular meeting of February 23rd.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any corrections or discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. And finally, the special meeting on March 9. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Any corrections or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any, any board member would like removed? Okay, can I have a motion for approval? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Lovins.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Opposed, no. Motion carries six-zero. Moves us forward to action items. N for Human Resources. Dr. Henson.
I do notice you didn't ask me about the bid for fruit smoothies under business consent, but we'll move on in relation to that regard. So it's amazing that we're already doing bids, we're boarding bids for food service for next school year. And so that's an interesting process. Do you have a recommendation for you on number one under Action, Human Resources? Unfortunately, this is a recommendation for non-renewal of a professional employee. You have the documentation in front of you.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries six-zero. We'll move on to, I have N2 on here.
N2 is correct. I recommend to you tonight that we approve up to 10 days from the sick leave assistance bank for one of our employees. This employee has submitted a letter to you notifying you why that they need this assistance.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries six-zero. Move on to action item O, Business Services.
That's Mr. Lane, if he would join me at the podium tonight. And so this is a recommendation to purchase, purchase Follett's Destiny Textbook Manager and Resource Manager. Mr. Lane, thank you for being with us tonight. This has a dramatic impact on you, so would you explain to us what this means, please?
The software that, we already own some software from Follett called Destiny. It's what we use for the library automation system. So it takes care of library books, check-in and checkout, those types of things. This would be additional modules to that software package. In, in reality, the software here is called out as two different packages, but Follett is in the process of essentially combining these into a single module, and that's really what we're purchasing. So I talk about this as if it's two different packages. At some point in time, not too distant future, it'll be the same name. I believe what they're going to call it is this Destiny Resource Manager. The solution is designed to allow us to manage essentially all educational learning resources, whether they're print or digital. It has the capacity to also manage facility assets and equipment if the district were to choose to use it as such. Right now, I'm recommending we use it for those, those devices we're checking into in and out for students as part of the digital learning initiative, as well as the textbook management component. And really, there's kind of three areas that the software helps with that are probably most easily digested. The first is as a resource management solution, and I'm going to go back to my notes here to make sure I give you the correct information. As a resource management solution allows us to maintain a centralized inventory of these assets, both as resources and as expenditures. So not only do we know what we have, but we can also tell you what we spent on those resources today and then longitudinally. Know the current depreciated value of, of those resources that are in that system. So once we have it in here and we have the cost, we can also calculate the depreciation of those items over time. Determine how those resources are allocated by resource type, school, department, person, so on and so forth. We can tell you who has the device or which department has the device, where that device is located, and, and then give you historical information about who has had it in the past. And then we can review what percentage of those resources are actually being utilized. So are we buying the correct quantity of things? And if we aren't, we make an adjustment there, or if we have too many, we make an adjustment. And hopefully, over time, what we are able to do is get it pretty much in that Goldilocks zone of just right. There's also an administrative accountability piece. This tells us that essentially we buy only what we need and only when we need it. And then the student learning responsibility. This doesn't really have to do with helping the students be more responsible for the devices so much as it does allows the district to make sure that we have the right resource in the right hands at the right time. And so by combining these components with what we already have, there's a few key areas that, that it hits, and I'd like to review those briefly here. So one piece is circulation. We can catalog inventory and circulate each and every individual item, and we can know where it is, kind of 24/7. The second is accountability. We can assign specific assets to specific individuals and also, again, know where those assets are and who has them. ISBN. If the district would choose to do so, we could use ISBN numbers to catalog the textbooks and, and other books rather than barcoding everything. You can imagine there's a process and a cost associated with barcoding, scanning those things in, and so we could do that through ISBN number. It would give us an audit trail. We could keep a permanent log of changes made related to individual assets. So things like device breakage, as we go through and get towards the end of the school year, we're going to have to collect all of these devices. It would be nice for us to be able to say, okay, this device had, you know, some sort of a nick or a dingon or whatever, but it didn't require fixing, whereas this device had enough of a, of damage that it did require fixing. Compliance, we can respond to funding audits. When, when people ask us, what did you spend your dollars on? What did you spend our taxpayers' dollars on? We're better able to provide them with those answers. Valuation, we can know the value of the resources that are at our command and at our disposal. Inventory, again, that centralized inventory lets us know what, what do we have and where is it? Utilization, we have a better ability to demonstrate how the devices are used, who has them, you know, how they're distributed across the district. Transfer, so as a device goes out, and then we check it in, and the device goes out to someone else, we'll have a log that shows who's had that device and what happened to the device while it was in their possession. Maintenance, not necessarily with the digital devices, but if you were to use this for other assets, you could set maintenance schedules so you would be alerted when it's time to perform preventive maintenance on a device, rather than waiting until something breaks, fix it, or give it some attention before it breaks. Liquidation, when we're, when devices or assets are no longer of value to the district, we have a way of disposing of them properly and making sure we maintain records of how they're disposed. And then the last piece is some forecasting. By using the system, we have a better idea of the devices that we have, how many we've purchased, whether that was the right quantity or not, and then predict down the road based on growth and what we have, whether we need to buy more, buy less, or if we're doing just fine. So this software takes the place of something we have that was kind of homegrown, was not intended to perform the function we've kind of shoehorned into, and so this would help us get out of that. You may recall that originally, we, our intention was to use Skyward for this, and as we got ready to do that, we found that Skyward didn't necessarily make it easy for us to put those resources into and then do some of the tracking components that, that we want to do. And so in a nutshell, that's kind of what this software is all about. I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lane? Great.
I'll explain.
Sounds like a great, all-encompassing package there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll inter. Thank you, Dr. Denny. Was that Mrs. Lovins? Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries six-zero. We'll move on to letter P, Action. Dr. Henson.
As you are well aware, we have a valuable painting that has been in our possession that's been much discussed. What you have before you tonight is a loan agreement with the Nelson Atkins Museum of Art. There is not a cost attached to us with the caveat, they will assess the frame and the painting to see if any restoration needs to take place, and if it does, they will notify us in advance for our approval prior to any work being, taking, taking place on that piece of artwork. They will ensure the artwork, it will be on display at the museum as well, and it'll be a part of their Thomas Hart Benton collection there at the Nelson Atkins Museum of Art. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. So display for the public, they would ensure, protect, and again, if any restoration needs to occur, we would be notified in advance of the potential cost. We would have to approve that work taking place before it actually occurred.
And Dr. Henson, I understand that the painting within 60 days' notice could be back in our possession.
That is correct.
It is just on loan.
It's just a loan.
Correct. Okay.
On the, if there is repair to be done, are they going to assume and do that, or are we going to?
The repair cost, it would be our expense. Since it remains our painting.
Our property.
It's only on loan, then it would be at our expense. But again, we would have prior approval to that occurring.
And they would cover the cost of insurance?
They cover the cost of insurance.
For the entire time that they have possession of the painting?
That is correct.
Okay. And there's a replica now?
There's a replica now at North High School, correct.
Will they provide signage or anything like, like saying who it's from or where it's on loan from, or will that, is that included in here?
That is included in that as well, yes.
Any other questions?
I'd move approval of P1.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors and Mrs. Lovins. Is there any other discussion or comments?
Only that I think it really is a terrific partnership that allows a painting of substantial significance to be on public view again.
I second what Dr. Denny says.
The motion's been seconded.
Well, I mean, I second what he says.
Well, and I think, you know, the value of the painting itself is much more protected in an art museum of that nature rather than a high school. Over periods of time, artwork improves, I mean, costs more, is appraised for more, and if we can share that with our community and others who may not see that or have that opportunity, I think it's a gift to our community for them to be able to view that in such a great setting.
You know, I'd offer one other thing. I was part of the team that worked on the block addition to the Nelson Atkins, and so I got up close and personal with curators and things like that. And it is just the facility itself and the air quality and all the other conditioning that goes into an art museum is, is different than, than an everyday building. And so in that building, the, the, the quality of that atmosphere will be far better than any place else we could put it.
I just wanted to add real quickly that it's, it really is a partnership. And with the Shawnee Mission School District, and the Nelson does so many things with our elementary schools, et cetera, and we really appreciate them.
Absolutely. We hope that maybe the, the class that gave that gift to them will enjoy it at the, at the, at the Nelson and encourage others to see it, and it will be a part of a great collection that they have for Thomas Hart Benton. So that will be very cool. Any other comments? It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries six-zero. We'll move on to action item P2, which is the NSBA Conference Discussion. And I just lost my computer. Oh, well. We did attend a conference. It was the National School Board Association Conference of this year. It was in Nashville. The entire board did attend last week. And actually, I will bring mine up here because I want to state a policy that we are going to approve tonight. Try again. We have a list of policies that we'll be using, and if we forward to...
Seventy-five.
Seventy-six, I think it is, isn't it?
It is.
And that reads, it's about professional development, and the board encourages and may require administrators to attend activities which will directly benefit the educational needs of students. The district may use expenses to attend meetings approved by the superintendent. So we encourage our administrators, and in fact, during our work session tonight, we had a great report back from several principals, I think there were 12, that attended a conference. It was a principal's academy, and they came back absolutely energized with ideas and great, great things that they're going to incorporate into their buildings and ideas of programs and the wave of the future of things. And the board, although our, our main functions are policy, budget, and hiring a superintendent, we also give the vision of this district. We are a part of that. And if we don't know what are the coming trends, what is passe, where we need to be, how we need to inspire our kids and our teachers, it's very, very vitally important that the board be a part of this. In my eight years on the board, we truly have not done any board development, professional development. We have not included ourselves in that rank. And I think it is high time, and it was very, very, very beneficial for the board to be together. There were sessions that were Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. There must have been 50 sessions for each time period, so we sort of dispersed for the most part and garnered knowledge from all kinds of different sessions there. And we came back, again, enlightened about many things that are going on in education today. As Dr. Denny alluded to earlier, the Taylor County School District in Kentucky and the great vision that they had and the new means that they are using for graduation rates, for no dropout rates in their, in their community. And it was fascinating and very enlightening. And tonight, because of that, we wanted to share with you, each of us just took one session, which was difficult to narrow it to that, to just give you a very quick blurb of what we learned so that you can see too, the great advantages that we had for attending a conference like this. And I think we have a slide up there, and each of us took one topic. Mrs. Mack, I think you had the early ad topic.
I think I did. Thank you, Mrs. Zila. I attended a discussion, actually, it was a presentation on early education in the business community. It was put on by the Pennsylvania Early Learning Investment Commission. As many of you know, the majority of the brain is developed by the age of three, and if you want more statistics about that, their website is P-A hyphen E-L-I-C dot org. The statistics are really overwhelming. The benefits of early education, as Dr. Ziegler actually presented earlier during the board workshop, we looked at benchmarks where our students are and looking at the early indicator. We had 35 to 39% of our students in the early years, which almost, which are below benchmark, and that almost mirrors our free and reduced lunch rate here in the district at this time. Those benefits of early education can be reaped by local corporation and businesses because they have a vested interest in a talented workforce. Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania said 65% of their preschoolers stay in the area. 93% of over 300 employers that they surveyed said that they favored soft skills over preferred undergraduate majors. Now, soft skills, they're calling executive function skills, and all of those skills are developed in early childhood. They also gave more statistics about the best time to cultivate STEM or STEAM, if you add the arts. All of that can happen in early education. In fact, it's better if it's done in the earlier years. I found this quite interesting. Nearly one-third of Americans would rather clean their bathroom than do a math problem. STEM, STEAM, teacher training for early education is, is a definite must. So how do you link between businesses and early education? That was my, my keen interest. What they do with this commission is they form community partnerships with local businesses and civic leaders. They even are hosting an economic summit on early childhood investment. In Pennsylvania, the businesses and corporations provide the funds for the quality early education programs. There are tax credits for businesses who support early education programs for kids from low to middle-income families. These businesses are also encouraged to adopt policies to support working parents. The quality programs that are in a community link with the local school districts. The curriculum directors meet with early education providers. The district kindergarten teachers collaborate with early education teachers. And summer programs like our Jump Start, thank you Shawnee Mission Education Foundation for supporting that. Summer programs are also supported by businesses. Also work with local libraries, aligning curriculum and regional business teams help out. They create packets available for parents so that they can know what kindergarten readiness looks like. Since the pre-kindergarten or early education programs in Pennsylvania have gotten to this level, it has lowered their special education costs in the state by $68 million. Overall, I was very impressed with the connections made between the communities, the businesses, and the civic leaders, and with schools to make a real investment in our early learners.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. I think the next topic is the Taylor County School District. Dr. Denny?
Well, I was fascinated to listen to a superintendent and an entire Board of Education from Taylor County. And I think they described their district as low-performing at best, maybe 10 years ago. And they brought the superintendent, who was born in that town, back to make some changes, and he was pretty innovative. It's, it's a progressive learning style. They don't, they don't have grades. They test their students four times a year, and they place them in a learning center that's, that's consistent with their ability. So you could, you could have somebody who's intellectually a sixth grader, but, but chronologically a second grader, which to me says you're, you're really allocating resources where they do the, the most good. You're teaching... You're teaching the students for their ability, and there's no particular requirement to stay in that grade level all year long. I said grade level, they don't really have grade levels. Once you demonstrate proficiency, you move on to the next. But what I found just really inspiring was his statement that he had a zero dropout rate and a hundred percent graduation rate. Now, that's not to say, as he explained to us, that he didn't have kids coming in to drop out, but he has a way with words and a sort of a methodology. He will congeal the student and their parents to stay in school, or he'll get a judge to force them to stay in school, but he's going to keep them in school until they graduate. And I guess the proof is in, in the demonstrated by, by their record. I just, it's just amazing. I liked it.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Denny. Continuous improvement from the boardroom to the classroom. Mrs. Goodburn.
I have to say that it was very...
Difficult to decide which, because they offered such a wide variety and a wide amount of programs and presentations, but the neat thing about that, I actually just went back on their, the app that I had, and all of those PowerPoints, all of that information from all of those sessions is readily, readily available to any of us. So, if there's anything that you missed and wanted to go back and look at, you know, a presentation about something else, those are all right there. So, I just wanted to let you all know that too. But I did see, I went to continuous improvement from the boardroom to the classroom, and I thought it very interesting too, in our work session, that that was the title of the presentation today from the administrators that attended Daggett's Conference or their work session, and that was in continuous improvement. So, and the basic premise is that improvement is not something that starts and stops, but it's something that requires an organizational, professional commitment to an ongoing process of learning, self-reflection, adaptation, and growth. The presenting district spoke about their focused efforts system-wide, and I, I think back to our culture and our discussion about culture and creating that culture and that focus, with their strategic plan at the center of all their processes, and that focus or alignment is only the first step, is the first step towards improving performance. It's interesting that the beginning of the year, they gather all employees at a convocation of sorts to introduce the five goals that they will be working on towards that year. In the video, it was really neat, the students actually presented, they had students on the video presenting those five goals to all staff at their convocation. The basic premises that data is at the center of all decision-making, decisions and actions at all levels focused to support effective student learning. Every campus, every classroom, every student, each have a mission statement, which I thought was very powerful. They are, all are on the same page and in charge of their learning. They even have students lead their parent-teacher conferences when they use, and they use these data folders of all the data they have collected, and they actually, and they showed a picture of this, the teacher being in kind of in the center, and she would just move between the tables of the students and the parents, and the students are leading their own, they're in charge of their own learning, which was really powerful to me. So, what does CNI mean to a board member? So, it's accountability, giving you data you need to support decisions that you make, just like in our work session, in all of our work sessions, we've really been focusing on data, and that's important for us, for the accountability. Looking at trending data over time, like we did tonight too, thank you, Dr. Strike, the trending data for us, because change does not happen overnight. In comparison information, data from surrounding districts that you can benchmark against, and I know in my four years in the board, I believe this was the, well, maybe last year was the first time that we saw data from surrounding districts and how we're benchmarking against them. And board goals that are aligned to district goals, how they operate, accountability. All this data that is compiled is readily available on their website too. For parents, patrons to see also helps to include parents in the conversation. So, I came away, I guess, with a power, just a focused approach, and I think that that are, it was very evident in our principles that went to the academy, and just that focused approach of being able to focus in on what's important, and that's student achievement.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Enhancing student achievement by building engagement, hope, and well-being. Mrs. Levens.
Very hopeful. I attended a session led by the district superintendent for the Howard County, Maryland. It's the, a large area between Baltimore, suburban, suburban Maryland between Washington, DC and Baltimore. I'm going to have to wear my glasses for this. They had a very powerful model for engaging all their students all the time. They, all of their kids go through an student Gallup poll, engagement poll, in which students, and it's a free assessment that's available through Gallup. Is there an adult in my life who cares about my future at this school? Do I have the opportunity to do what I do best every day? Were you treated with respect all day yesterday? Those are the kinds of questions that they ask the students. They focus on this because as kids go through school, they tend to lose, engagement tends to decline, and therefore, hope and well-being also decline. They, Gallup has shown that for each one percent gain in engagement, they get a six percent increase in reading achievement, an eight percent increase in math achievement. So, it's a very important component of the school experience. Their elementary model focuses on several components. They, students pre-K through grade five have world language instruction, which boosts intellectual growth and enables students to think more flexibly. They departmentalize so that teachers build a deeper, more engaging instruction for each of their students. They have all-day pre-kindergarten, which is rigorous instruction coupled with play, movement, and music. They incorporate telehealth so that all students have access to health, health assessments. They connect the children in school to professionals remotely that are nearby, but they also conference parents in, so that there's this community approach to, to the child's health. Good health is associated with higher achievement. They use a strengths-based model of instruction in which children they've discovered will achieve when they are engaged, and they use also a process that helps the teachers discover their own strengths. They also, as part of an overall philosophy in their district, talking, we heard about this also tonight, the mindset, Carol Dweck book, Moving From A Fixed Mindset To Developing, To Developing A Growth Mindset, that is, I can't do it becomes I can't do it yet. It's a, it's a different way of thinking. If we listen to kids, they will demand change with a growth mindset, if you, if you train them with this. It goes through their teachers, parents, principals. It's, it's something that they advance throughout their district. They also include online learning, enabling students to study areas of interest anytime, anywhere. A component district-wide is environmental education. It enables multiple ways of learning, multiple intelligences. It integrates learning opportunities that are relevant, active, and engaging for all students, and this transfers also into their buildings and the way their buildings are built. They have daylighting and exterior views in their buildings. They have forty-eight green schools that are certified as most, as energy, at the highest level of energy efficiency, and they involve the students in the process. The students become leaders in investigating and promoting good energy policies, recycling, energy solutions. They also become ambassadors to the community on all of this. They had a New York Stock Exchange in the classroom, sponsored by one of their financial centers. They had a 3D printer. They have music technology in their high schools and in some of their middle schools, teaching music theory to all students. They find that transfers to engineering and to science. And they had weather to the extremes. They spend a day in the Howard County, and I missed what it was, but I'm sure it is something like our NOAA. We've got a national oceanotic and aeronautics, we've got a national weather center here nearby, and I'm, they, they track the weather, interact with scientists to understand extreme weather. And some engagement works, their parents see the difference, their parents feel like the teachers know their kids really well. And just as a last item, they included a student, and Ms. Goodburn was in this session with me, but they included a student with a half vote on their board of education. The student does not vote in issues that, in which there, there are liability issues, but they do have a voice and participate, and it empowers the students to be fully engaged.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Social media. Mrs. Neighbor.
Thank you. I have an exciting topic because I think it's one that our leadership team talked about tonight, that they want to enhance, extend, and we need to do more work. But before I start on that one, I would just like to preface this as with any other profession that you're in, whether you're an engineer, a pilot, a teacher, a dentist, a doctor, a real estate agent, an insurance agent, no matter where you are, you are always required to gather more information, more CEUs to keep your license. Now, we aren't licensed, but we work with everyone that is, and it's important for us to be able to understand and to know what, what's ahead of us when we're working with our community, our teachers, our staff, and our people. During the last year, this board has heard loud and clear from the staff that the one thing we were not doing was professional development or staff development. We kind of let it go a little bit. And I can remember many, many years ago, and I've been on the board about eighteen right now, during my first years on the board, we were encouraged to go to NSBA, and we were encouraged to go to Washington to lobbyists, to lobby our congressional members and our senators and everybody. But at the same time, we had meetings during that time that let us engage with people around the United States and learn from what they were doing. And you can pick up little tidbits, you don't have to do a whole program, you can refine it, but listening and learning is the best thing that we can do, I believe, for all of you, our students, our staff, and our administrators, because otherwise, we're way behind. And so, tonight, I'm going to talk to you about social media, and I just want to give you a few tips about what you can add to your phone tonight. These are just ten quick apps. Google Maps, HealthTap, SoundHound, FlightTrack, Flipboard, Flixster, JotNotPro, Uber, Pandora, or Spotify. And if you don't have a few of these other abilities, Facebook, Twitter, Lyndacon, Flickr, Evernote, Yelp, Dropbox, I can find you some more. So, if you have all of those, you are a true techie. I think I have none of them.
But you know about them.
I do know about them, and I can text.
Sometimes.
One of the things I think that we are learning every day is how important technology is in our daily lives, and who's brighter at technology? Our children. We are behind our children. If we're, if we're in front of our children, we've had too much time on our hand to play. So, I just want you to know that. Our staff this year, one of the great things was putting in new computers. All of our teachers have gone to professional development to start that process, where our teachers are engaged in newest technology. We are looking how we can deliver technology through just basic laptops, phones. Look how many of your, your kids you never send out without a phone now. You want them to text you when you get there, you want to text them when they're on their way home. It is what we do today. We don't see hardly any children without an instrument in their hand, and they're brighter at it than we are. So, technology is really going to be on the forefront. Our leadership team talked about it tonight. They went, excuse me, to a presentation and learned that social media is so much on the forefront, and it's going to take a lot for everyone to stay ahead of the game. So, look for more information from our leadership teams, our teachers, and best of all, your children, your grandchildren, and kids coming out of Shawnee Mission.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbor.
Lastly is a session that I attended that was given by Dr. Ruby Payne. She's a well-known educator that travels around the country, talking a lot about reaching kids in poverty, and whereas we didn't think we were a district that would have that characteristic, we definitely do, and we have a lot of kids, and she, her message was kind of reaching those kids and understanding where they come from, because they come from very different mindsets than what we in middle-class America are all about, and how to reach those kids. And a very interesting example she gave, she had this one kid who was definitely a kid who lives in poverty, came from who knows what kind of home, and she would see him just very engaged with what she was saying, but would never participate, and would always do terrible on her tests, and she took him aside and she said, "You know what? I think, I think you know what's going on here. I think you could do much better than what you do." And he said, "You know what? I can't, I can't excel at this because my friends would, they just would ostracize me." He wouldn't say ostracize, probably not in his vocabulary, but, so she said, "Okay, what would an A cost you?" He goes, "That would be it. I'd be done with my friends." "Okay, what would a B cost you?" And he said, "B would be too much, they couldn't handle that." She goes, "What would a C cost you?" And he goes, "You know what? I can maybe get by with a C and still maintain my friendship with these guys." And so, she said, "I'll tell you what, you do A work, you engage yourself, you learn this material, and you prove it to me, and I'll make sure you get a C," so that you can hold up your, your head with your friends and you can, and you can, you know, maintain the people that you hang around with and stuff. She went into things about, you know, these, these kids are in survival mode. They're not thinking about what they're going to do at the mall, they're thinking about where their next meal's going to come from, and teachers have, have to know that point of reference from them. The speech that they learn, the number of words that they learn as kids is totally different from kids who are middle-class or from wealth. It's just a totally different perception, and I thought it was just incredibly enlightening to me to understand how to reach those kids. Their talk is not the same as our talk, and you have to figure out how to meet their needs and through communication, through, through all the different things that you offer them in the schools there. They have very hidden values, and like I said, they're in survival mode. She, she contrasted that with kids that come from middle-class and kids from wealth. Kids from middle-class are centered around achievement, whereas kids in, in poverty are scheduled around survival. Kids in wealth figure out connections. I mean, it's a whole different level, it's a whole different circle of needs and interactions that they have with that. So, it was, it was fascinating to me. I have her book, I haven't read it yet, and I can't wait to get through it and hear more about all of this stuff, because it was a whole new world of enlightenment, enlightened, there it is, yes.
We have two, actually.
Yes. She was amazing. So, this is the type of things that we're bringing back from a conference like this, and this is just one, this is just six little tidbits that we can offer you tonight, just very quickly. Thank you for waiting through it with us tonight. I think it's important that you know what we're garnering out there when we do our professional development. Something that the board is also working on is a board evaluation to make sure we are growing as a board, that we are encompassing that vision, that we need to have that transcend down to our students in our schools. So, anyway, we will move on.
Couple of things, Mrs. Zila, we'll take your comments, obviously, the, the topics, and we'll look at our strategic plan. As you know, you create the vision for the district, you've adopted the strategic plan. Some of these items are contained in the strategic plan at some point in time, some are not, and so, the strategic plan, we'll come back to you for an annual review and update in a couple of months, so it gives us a chance to look at that as well. And then, as we prepare the budget, obviously, some of those issues focus on these very issues, and so, for you to have an understanding of that is very important in the process. You know, a couple of the things that you didn't mention, because I know you have more than these, because some of you have said, "We really want to focus on these issues," are really a data dashboard, and so, we've talked about it a little bit, we've heard quite a bit about that, and I know some of you attended a school district, a pretty innovative approach. They're taking their very high-need student schools, and they're starting a year-round school. Now, year-round is it's an additional thirty days in the summer to try to eliminate summer regression, and so, that's going to be really an interesting project to follow and see what happens in that regard. Dr. Denny, I'm fascinated as well by the, the Taylor County, Kentucky School District. It's a six-spoke wheel system, very student-driven and student-paced at the same time, not only for alternative education, but for all students, and so, technology's a component, the self-paced component, but the students can choose what track or spoke they really want to take, and so, it has some really strong merit for some things that we could do in the Shawnee Mission School District.
I think it treated the teachers more like facilitators than, than...
I think it treated the teachers more like facilitators than someone being the oracle at the head of the, at the front of the room. And for me, it allows education to occur where you're teaching, you know, at the top of the class rather than teaching to the midpoint. And you're not leaving anybody behind.
You know, something I think is extremely beneficial, how do you, how well do you think you're doing or do you know you're doing if you don't have a basis for comparison? So if we really want to be the best, how do you know whether you're the best or not if you don't have any basis for comparison? So we had an opportunity to see some of the, some districts are doing some things. We're going, maybe we need to really look at that approach. Maybe that's something that we need to do as well. And so anyway, so we'll take all of these topics, the others you've sent to me to say, "Hey, we really have interest in this. Look at our strategic plan." You'll see that come back to you as well.
I'd also say we looked at some districts and thought, you know, we're doing pretty well.
Maybe we'll be presenting one of these days at those conferences. That would be awesome. All right. We'll move on to action item P3, TIF discussion. Dr. Henson.
So we have a speaker about it tonight, ironically, tax increment financing. He hasn't stayed for the discussion, but this is something that is certainly on our radar screen. That's why it's an agenda item before you tonight. We have compiled all of the tax abatement projects that are within the Shawnee Mission School District. As you know, there are 14 different cities that make up our school district and we have a number of tax abatement projects. And we have several TIFs that are in process and we have some more that are potential as well. And so Dr. Southwick's been working on TIFs as well as construction, a lot of other things. Dr. Southwick, you want to give us an update from your perspective?
I do. And there's been a lot of important things on the board agenda and we still have a lot to cover. But I do think it's very important that we spend a little bit of time to look at what's facing the district right now moving forward. And I want to go on record saying we did not stage Mr. Summers to come speak tonight. Came with his own volition and shared some very good points with respect to some of the impact. For, just for the record, there are several incentives that communities have to start up their economic engine and TIF is just one of those. I'm actually, tonight, because it's a community that we are working with, a municipality we're working with right now, Overland Park, on their website talks about economic development incentives. And they list TIF, tax increment financing, TDDs, transportation development districts, CIDs, community improvement districts, and sales tax revenue, which are STAR bonds. And all of those are tools that the cities can use to bring development or redevelopment into their community. And TIFs have been around a long time. Although I've not been in Shawnee Mission forever, I think my first involvement with the TIF was in 1993, before we had HVAC in the district. So we've had some experience with respect to that. Law in Kansas is a little bit different and that's what we want to talk about tonight. So why is this an issue right now? Not to be trite, but the Shawnee Mission Way in the past would have been to receive the notices of TIF formation boundaries being developed and would have chosen not to be involved in that discussion at all. And I think the feeling behind that was that there really was not any impact to the school district by not being involved. So we have several TIF projects that have come on the books over the last several years. And I have to thank Russ Knapp. Russ is in the audience tonight. He's hiding back there. But as we started the discussion, I said, "Russ, let's just pull those numbers. Let's look at those projects and see really if there's any impact or not." And what we found is, is that there's definitely impact with the school district when communities exercise these projects with TIF and other abatements. So as we look through that, and just for some clarification, not all the money can be given away. The state TIF law says that our 20 mills that are captured by district assessed valuation that goes to the state that then is immediately returned back to us is, cannot be a part of any TIF project. So we're sheltered from TIF a little bit with that respect. But Mr. Knapp, I think, did an excellent job of going through with every one of our opportunities to look at revenue that comes in the district and began to gauge what the impact was. And what we found was, is our biggest impact is in our capital outlay levy, is that the district has chosen to be at the max, to levy those eight mills that, based on our assessed valuation, brings dollars back in so we can redevelop and develop and improve our infrastructure. At this point in time, that's not exempt and that basically is on the table. So as we looked at projects that we have right now that are out there for redevelopment and what the impact was, just in the capital outlay, it began to look somewhat significant. So it's important that we provide the information to the board as we go along so that we can look at what the impact or any potential adverse effect might be. Therein comes in the difference in the law and where I came from and where we are right now. In my previous working experience, one of you would have had an opportunity to be on a board, potentially nine or 11 people could voice your opinion, and then the vote was taken to move forward with a TIF project. In the state of Kansas, and this is the important piece for the board, is that as communities look to create the boundaries for TIF projects, the district has the right to review that project to gain as much information as they possibly can prior to the establishment of that district and can consider the adverse effect. But in Kansas, the district board of education can take a vote to veto that project. You can veto it because you don't support it. You can veto it because you don't feel like you have all the information you need to move forward to look at what the adverse effect is. The thing that makes that a little bit difficult is, is that although we work with city entities and we've worked with several in our school district boundaries, is that the information that's out there related to the actual projects is not always detailed enough as that discussion moves forward to set that district boundary. So what we are looking at is trying to make sure that we have as much information as we possibly can about what those projects entail and what the life of those projects are and whether or not there's opportunity for the district to share along the way. So that we can make, I think, good due diligence about our decisions about whether the project really provides adverse effect for the school district or not. Now, having said that, I don't think the school district wants to stand up and say, "We don't want development at 91st and Metcalf," because I think we do. It's good for our community. And that we don't want development at 95th and Metcalf, because we do. That's good for our community. And that we don't want development at the Brookridge Golf Course at 103rd and Antioch, because that can potentially be good for our community. I think what we say is, is that in these times when it's very tenuous of what happens in Topeka, that we have to look at every potential dollar that we not only have this year, but we have moving forward over the next several decades. A lot of, a lot of people believe that with TIF projects, there's no impact to the district. But there's great impact to the district, although it may not create X number of students that would live there. Some of the projects we've looked at have been residential, that have been places where persons like myself can go live, maintenance-free. And then I will sell my house and I'll go live there. But the halo effect of that is, when I leave my house, we're re-greening in the Shawnee Mission School District. So we don't know the total impact of the families that will move in the houses that will have kids that will come to school. So what we really are trying to do is to partner with our local municipalities. Because I really believe that the school district and the city and the parks department and the water department, we all serve the same people. And that we have a responsibility to work together to support quality of life, not only in the Shawnee Mission School District, but in the Overland Park areas and Shawnee and Merriam and Prairie Village and all of those particular municipalities. So goes the school district, so goes the development in the community, so goes our livelihood. I don't think that we are where we can any longer just turn our head and say, "Go TIF" and it's okay with us. Because now we know there's an impact. Yes?
Is there a way to bargain at all about, on a TIF, that maybe we still get our eight mills for like capital outlay or somewhere along in there? So there is a little bit of give and take. You may not be able to recoup all of it, but some of it would still be there. Is there a possibility of having communications that way?
Yes, there is. And as a matter of fact, there are a couple of TIFs that we have on the books that are shared TIFs that pay out over a short period of time. And as they escalate, there's more tax dollars that comes to the school district and all the other taxing entities. Mr. Summers did a good job of laying that out. It doesn't appear at this point in time that we could go and negotiate just for the capital outlay part of our budget, but we could look at a percentage that held us harmless with that. But that's an equal amount that would, whatever that percentage was, that would have to be shared across to all the other taxing entities. And right, wrong, or indifferent, whether we think these developers are greedy or not, they're playing by the rules of the game. That's the law. And they're going to work with their attorneys to look at the maximum amount of incentive that they can, using other people's dollars to do what needs to be done. So our position is this, is that as these TIF projects come forward, and right now on the 16th of March, there were two TIF potential boundaries that were considered in Overland Park, 91st and Metcalf and 95th. And from the records, from what I've seen, that they did vote to take action, to move forward with those districts. From that day, we have 30 days to try to garner as much information as we can and to be able, I think, to report to you what we believe the adverse effect would be. Again, I want to say publicly to you and everybody that's in the audience and any money that might watch this through streaming, is that we're not anti-development. We're not against incentives that will re-green and regrow our communities. But what we want to make sure that we do is that we protect the thing that's sacred to us, and that's our assessed valuation and our dollars, so that we can continue to provide quality programs for all of our students and pay good salaries for our staff and do the things that I think the Shawnee Mission Way was. So as we look at that, we've not received notice from Overland Park yet that they've taken that action, but that will be, I think, forthcoming. I think we will be, in the next few days, trying to garner as much information as we can from those developers to try to look at what we can do to solidify some understanding and some reasonableness with some partnerships so that we can make a recommendation to the board in terms of how to move forward. This is not, for the record, this is not just on these issues. I think this is moving forward. From August to now, I have a folder in my office that's that thick with respect to notices that we receive on TIF projects that are out there. So there's an impact now that, particularly as we're involved in the recovery, that I don't think maybe we saw before in the district and we want to stay attuned to it.
I think with the issues that they have in Topeka at this time and that that trickle-down effect has now come down to our local level. And whether it's from our counties, from our county or city or districts, whatever, school districts, whatever it may be, everybody's now fighting for the same dollar where you had a little, a little more give and take before. But that trickle-down is affecting all of us. So I think this is something that we have to look at. And it doesn't mean you're anti-business or anti-growth or anti-anything. It's just looking at how can we build a partnership that's good for everyone instead of just one.
And my commitment to Dr. Henson and the board and the community is, we will continue to try to foster positive community relationships with all of the entities that we work with so that we make sure that as we redevelop and develop in those areas that we have an opportunity to maintain and also redevelop our infrastructure. Because if we don't, we're going to wake up someday and there's going to be a great tax base out there. But families will select to move their kids to other districts. So we're going to continue to work with all the cities. We've had some great discussions with city council members and economic development staff and mayors and that are supporting and understand our position. Few that haven't, but we'll continue to try to work with them to win them over. But our goal is to develop that good community partnership.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Southwick? Thank you very much for outlining all of that about TIFs. And a TIF lasts 23 years, is that what you said?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three. That's a long time to have no tax base in that particular area.
And with respect to that, some of the understanding is when the boundary is set, the clock starts. When the first project comes in, which is maybe 12 months later, there's 23 years. If another project comes in three years later, it's 23 years. If another project comes in 10 years later, so what starts out to be 23 can end up being much further than that.
Forever.
So.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I hope I'm around for that whole duration.
Well, and then they get to having a CID because it's, it needs some work in the park lot or upkeep. So you never get rid of the TIF or the CID or.
Well, and I think what we're saying is that all of these programs can work together to do what's best for kids. And that's, that's our goal, is to work with our community partners to make sure that we all support our community and support our kids.
Right. Great.
You're well said.
Move on to action item four, which is proclamations. I have summarized these, if I may take this one over. We have four proclamations for tonight and I have kind of combined them because these are all great, important groups and I don't mean to de-emphasize any of them. They are proclamations for our Substitute Teachers Week, which is April 6 through 10, 2015. Our Para-Professional Appreciation Week, April 6 through 10, 2015. National Volunteer Week, it's April 12 through the 18th of this year. And Administrative Professionals Day, which is April 22nd, 2015. All of which will happen before our next board meeting. So I will just say thank you to all of those groups. You're incredibly important to our district, all of you administrative people. Terry Wintering, thank you for all that you do.
I move we adopt them.
Thank you, Dr. Denny, with one fell swoop.
Second.
Okay, he did it. That's my, sorry.
Okay, Dr. Denny and Mrs. Levens. Okay, is there any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries six, zero. Very good. Okay. Dr. Henson, I will turn it back over to you then.
So we have board policies before you tonight. I'll get back to that screen maybe. And so.
Number five through 54, I believe.
So we've had a chance to look at those previously, obviously be repetitive, but the Board Policy Task Force, so you've been working on these for quite some time. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions about the first? These are the second readings through number 54. Mrs. Neber?
I would move approval of policies number five through 54.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries six, zero. Move on to the first readings. Dr. Henson.
We have first reading through 88.
Correct.
And so certainly if you have questions or comments, the Board Policy Task Force has been working on these policies. Again, this is the first reading, so we'll come back to you at the next board meeting.
That's right. Are there any questions or issues that anyone has with these particular policies? We will address them then again at the April meeting for their second reading. We will move on to our reports to the board, the financial report. Dr. Henson.
You have the board financial report in front of you. I hate to be a broken record, but nothing outstanding there. And so it's, we're right on course for the year.
Very good. Any questions about the financial report? Great. We'll move on to board comments. Are there any comments by board members? I think we've commented a lot tonight, more so than usual, on a variety of subjects here. Okay, Mrs., oh, Dr. Denny.
I will just say that, having attended the musical 13 at North High School last Friday, it was just a delightful evening and the kids at North were just outstanding.
They were indeed.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Goodbrun?
Oh, I move that the board of education recesses to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel and discuss matters relating to the acquisition of real property. The meeting will reconvene at 9:30. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries six zero. Thank you all for coming this evening. It was a long night. You, you labored with us. Thank you.